Do you want to start the practice or enable the meeting on Zoom? While Mr. Ferrer is doing that, remember it's just a reminder from our last few board meetings, all your microphones are turned off when you're ready to speak. If you just bring them close to you and turn the microphone on, that helps greatly with the audio in the room and recording for those that are with us through the live stream on Zoom. Mr. Ferrer, can you see if there are some guests joining us?
Yeah, more.
We have some. Okay. Mr. Kizmarski, we're ready to begin with your.
All right. Thank you very much. This meeting of the Mawa Board of Education is open to members of the public who are physically present. Members of the public that attend will be asked to follow the same procedures as all other visitors to our schools. Those procedures can be found on the agenda page of our website. Initially, the board meeting will be livestreamed for viewing purposes only. Anyone wishing to view the meeting may do so via Zoom. The web address ID for this meeting is 858-9091-1579, and the required password is 988-391. We have a roll call, Mr. D. Mr. Copeland.
Here.
Mr. De Silva.
Here.
Mr. Denise.
Here.
Mr. Gallo.
Here.
Ms. Conica.
Here.
Dr. Morthee. Dr. Park. Ms. Sagon.
Here.
And Mr. Kizmarski.
Here. Admitted notice of agenda of this meeting is to provide the Ridgeland News and the Record specifying that the Mawa Board of Education will be on December 8th, 2021, at the administrative offices, 60 Ridge Road, Mawa, New Jersey. A copy was filed with the township clerk. Please rise for the flag. Mr. Copeland.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Executive session to the end of the meeting. Agenda questions, please limit your questions at this time. The resolution is under business on this agenda. As a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position within the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of the public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. Please specify the resolution you are referring to in your question. Please give a motion to open the meeting to the public. Mr. De Silva seconded by Mr. Copeland. Anyone with agenda questions? Can I get a motion to close the meeting to the public? Ms. Conica seconded by Mr. Denise. Dr. Toro, superintendent's report.
Yes, thank you very much. I have three things that I wanted to share with the board. First and foremost, we had parent-teacher conferences for our kindergarten through fifth grade classes or grades last, right before Thanksgiving break. I just wanted to thank all the teachers for taking the time to provide such a comprehensive breakdown of the students' academic levels. The time and effort that they put into that allows the parents to really see where the students are and really where we want to take them. So we just want to thank all the teachers for all the preparation that they did for those moments. Next is an exciting time for Mawa, where we brought back the concerts. I know it's been a long time coming, and the holiday concerts are now upon us. JK had their concert last night. Band, chorus, and orchestra were able to perform for the parents who are in-house, which was great to see. Also, Ramapo Ridge is December 9th, which is tomorrow, at 7:00. And Mawa High School is December 14th at 7:00. So we greatly appreciate when you're talking about teachers. We greatly appreciate the teachers who prepare our musicians. More importantly, we also thank the parents, because we know it's a commitment for the parents as well, bringing them to and from practice, having them practice at home. And last but certainly not least, all of our musicians, the time and effort that they put into their craft, the product here at Mawa, I've said this before and I'll say it again, is really something to be noted, because I've been in a number of districts, and what Mawa has here is extremely special. So good luck and congratulations to our JK musicians. Good luck to the Ramapo Ridge and high school musicians. Last but not least, as you'll see to my left, oftentimes we celebrate secondary accomplishments, and I'm very happy to report we have an elementary student that I feel we should celebrate. The New Jersey Division of Civil Rights launched the Youth Bias Task Force Student Competition, encouraging youth under the age of 25 to submit a slogan, hashtag, artwork, design, or video on the theme of #StopTheHate. Tess Monk, a fifth grader at JK, submitted her artwork for the 2020 Youth Bias Task Force Competition, and out of 144 submissions, her artwork was selected as one of the 44 pieces for the Youth Bias Task Force Student Exhibit that was hosted by the Manic Contemporary in Jersey City. The DCR hosted a reveal for the students whose artwork was selected on Saturday, November 20th. During the reveal, they asked Tess to talk about what inspired her to create the piece and what it means to her. So I just wanted to say I'm really proud of Tess. It was an opportunity that was just a choice for our students. It was put out there, and whoever wanted to take part, they could take part in it. She decided to put her hat in a ring, and I just felt like the picture is beautiful. It says a lot, and it's for a great cause. So congratulations to our young artists over at JK. You make Mawa very proud. That's all I have.
Mr. Pleger.
A few items for tonight for members of the board as well as members of the public. The first, for anybody who has, or we saw our agenda posted earlier this week, there was one revision made from the business office. We removed item 17Z that was originally on the agenda. That was for the acceptance of the lease of computers. There was a matter with the bid that was presented to us late today, and will be tabled and awarded or presented to the board for award at our December 22nd board meeting. The other item, or the two items, first is HVAC work at the JK 300 wing that is on for tonight's approval by the board. That is a project that came in at a total cost, the bid as well as the other agenda item related to it, which is for the control system for this work as well as for some other areas within JK. Total cost came in for both at $994,750. We did budget from the 21, for the 21-22 budget. We budgeted a transfer out of cap reserve from this project of $970,000, which is slightly over budgeted, $25,000. However, we are going to apply some federal funds that will be received through the ESRA monies. Within the ESRA II allocation, we receive funds for infrastructure work, which this does apply for or is eligible for. The amount of funds is $660,570. That would leave an overall balance on this project, if it is awarded this evening, of $334,108. That would come from a cap reserve to fund this project. So very happy with the overall results of this. And the other item to note is the land audits that we have been going through for most of the school year thus far, since late September, I think it was our first meeting. We have our last meeting scheduled next week, where we'll be discussing the central office building here as well as our maintenance garage. And then we'll be continuing to summarize everything shortly after we return from the December break. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Dr. Fetter.
Yes, on the screen here, Dr. Govino and I prepared a brief presentation providing the board with an update. I know that we had started this school year very excited about the launch of the Thunderbird Partnership Program. And what's been so exciting is that it's really soared over the course of the last few months. So what Dr. Govino and I wanted to do is we wanted to highlight some of the things that have been going on in classrooms. We've already shared that the Thunderbird Partnership Program has made up of five different types of partnerships. And as we learn from our strategic planning, our action plan speaks to primarily key pieces related to community connections and bringing our curriculum to life. So what we're going to showcase this evening are just a few instances where this program has allowed to do just that.
So the first one up on your screen is Mr. Dahand came in to GW, to one of our third grade rooms, and he is a film technician, and he actually worked on the Clifford movie that just came out. So the kids were really excited, because obviously they want to see the Clifford movie or they have seen it. But now they got to see a real-life person that worked on it, which is also amazing. The connection here, though, is not just the movie. It's really about talking about character voice in writing and what it means to come to life in a movie. So he talked a little bit about animation, but he also talked about script writing, right? And how that comes to life through the combination of human and animation on screen. The kids actually got to read in front of a green screen and had a really great time reading the script, because it said Dahand across it, so it was an official script that they got to read. So it was a really great experience. Okay, so the next one is a class up at the high school, one of our animation classes. There's two different pictures up here. So one is Matt came in, I'm not going to say his name wrong, but Branson. And he actually did work, he's an animator currently in the field. And he did work for Lipton, Coke. He did work on the Super Bowl. And he talked to our kids about what animation is in real life, like what actually happens, right? How do we get jobs? What does that job look like? How do we, as a freelancer, keep getting more jobs, right? What does that downtime look like? What do I do with my downtime? He actually also talked about programs he uses, which directly connect to what they were using in the classroom. On the right, Anne Lapore. She's a parent-in-law. She's also a professor at Ramapo. She came in and spoke to our students about what the major looks like in college. And she spoke about just staying true to what you want to do with art and setting high goals and expectations for yourselves. So she actually invited our students to submit. They have a film festival or animation festival in the spring, and we're going to submit to her some of our student work.
So these opportunities provided students with additional ideas in terms of what contemporary art can look like in a variety of fields. And Professor Lapore spoke about what does an art major look like and what does that potentially look like post-college. Mr. Evan Chang, he is a Mawa High School alumnus. He spoke to our business classes. He spoke about mindfulness and what that has done for himself in his business. He is an acupuncturist and a physical therapist. He spoke also to our entrepreneur classes about how his work, he moved from his business from his basement to having three different locations. So students were able to learn about the different successes and what that looks like from the ground up. This piece we had at our elementary school over at George Washington, we had a construction manager work with students and brainstorm with students after they read Larry the Lion. And students worked with the construction manager on constructing a house for their stuffed animals. So this provides students with context related to, you know, the field, but also having a visitor, which is also always fun. And Mr. Matthews was able to provide his expertise related to what that construction would look like with students. It also provided an opportunity for a little bit of a STEM activity.
Back at our high school again, in preparation for Veterans Day, one of our classes was reading about the US Navy. They were reading about submarine life. They were also reading about the impact that being a military person has on the family and what that looks like. And they invited Mr. Miller to come in. He is on our expert directory, not as a veteran, but we found out through a little research that he is a veteran. And he spoke to our kids about what it was like to be on a submarine and connected to what they were reading about. And they got to ask questions and have what they were reading really have a connection to real-life stories.
The students were very interested, because they had just recently written an article about submarines. And this gentleman had been in a submarine. So he was able to ask questions about what that looked like and what that felt like. Over at The Ridge, our social studies classes invited an archaeologist who zoomed into the class. They just started their unit on Mesopotamia. And this particular archaeologist, Mr. Zumerman, actually did archaeology work in Mesopotamia. So, which is amazing. He was able to answer questions that students had and provided context related to that really cool experience.
Again, in our animators class, we had Rachel Calucci come back. And she's an alumni for us, right? So if you recognize her name, that's why. She's been doing work as well in the field. One of the things that she was most recently in or had a part in was Arlo, the alligator boy in their trailer. She got to talk to the kids a lot about storyboarding and what that looks like in real life, but then also what the processes that she goes through to create her storyboards. And the kids got to ask questions about what her process was going to college and working for her major, and then again, landing jobs such as this. And the last one, this is a really fun one. Mr. Pascal loves this one. So we had drug major Marty Fernandy come back. He was a grad from 1981 Mawa High School. And he got to lead our marching Thunderbirds at homecoming. So that's him with his back to us in that picture. And those are our Thunderbirds currently, under his guide. So we were really excited about this one, too.
Really, to see all of this in action, we obviously aren't able to sit in on every lesson where an expert is able to attend. But those opportunities where we have, it's been pretty incredible. The students are respectful. They're seeking insight. They're curious. And it's been really awesome to see what we wanted to occur is happening. So the curriculum is certainly coming to life, and we're excited that this is just the beginning. So these are a few other opportunities that are entering our classrooms. We have a local inventor who is speaking to our science classes at the middle school, talking about their work with patents. And students are going to, on their own, they're going to be working on inventing something. We have an attorney who is reviewing legal fundamentals related to trials. And this is in preparation for students who are working through a mock trial, also at the middle school. We have police officers providing their expertise related to law enforcement. And we have a police officer who's actually working with those same mock trial students on a different day, because the actual case has to do with law enforcement. And we also have another police officer who is speaking about his work, and he's doing a read aloud to one of our first grade classes at Betsy Ross School, reading "How to Apologize", which will be nice. We just recently had a professional soccer coach in our high school Spanish class. They're currently working on a unit related to leisure activities and sports. And students were able to experience a soccer practice where the coach used nothing but domain-specific language and the target language of Spanish, which was really awesome. And we also have a financial analyst speaking to our Money Matters class about stocks and credit and financial responsibility. And we also have had in our business class, we have our business, a lot of our business teachers are incorporating people currently in a variety of business fields. We had someone who was a court reporter speak to business and personal law classes about what their experience has been in the field. So we just wanted to share an update with all of you, because we're really excited. A big shout-out to our teachers. They've been awesome. An even bigger shout-out to our students, what they're doing, even in preparation for the visits. They're preparing thoughtful questions. They're engaging. It's really awesome stuff. And Dr. Govino and I, Dr. Toro, Ms. Rizzo, we're all really pumped about where this is going to lead our district's instructional. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you very much. President's report, just a couple of quick things from Mr. Pascal. He was happy to announce that eight Mawa High School students were accepted to the 2022 Burton County Chorus. Their seniors Samuel Kim, Paige Leoli, Erin Ryan, Joey Churchy, and Adrian Zerba, Junior Melanie Gilbert, sophomore Ricardo Petroni, and freshman Colin Mossman. So congratulations to them. And special recognition goes to Ricardo Petroni, who placed first in the 101 section. So congratulations to all of them. In other note, it was great to see our Mawa Thunderbird marching band recently marching for the Home for the Holidays parade in Ramsey. Unfortunately, it was in Ramsey. But they were excellent, from what I understand, as always. The hope here is that next year maybe they'll be able to march closer to home, to the Mawa home for Mawa. And finally, real quick, I missed the last meeting because I was away, but I would be remiss if I didn't just say thank you very much to the board, the voters, my friends, family, especially my wife, for voting for me, at least I think she voted for me. But it felt really good to pull it off. But I also want to, you know, just say thank you to the others who also ran. Unless you've done it, unless you've put yourself out there, you have no idea what that's like. And I don't, it wasn't fun a lot of the time, putting yourself out there 24/7. But I was happy to see others stepped up to run. But I was also very, very happy to pull up and be christened by ten votes. But thank you very much for that. That is my report. With that, board committee reports.
Claire, have a first.
Mr. Copeland. Okay, Community Corner. December is National Drunk and Drugged Driving Prevention Month. It serves as a reminder to never drive impaired. It stems from the creation of Mad Mothers Against Drunk Driving in 1980. The time between Thanksgiving and New Year's Day is described as one of the deadliest and most dangerous times on America's roadways due to an increase in impaired driving. So remember, please drive sober. Hanukkah just concluded, so we hope everyone had a very nice holiday. Dr. Toro mentioned it earlier. We have winter concerts coming up. Want to congratulate all the JK students. I was there last night with Dr. Park, and it was a wonderful night. It was really nice to see that back in person. And I want to congratulate all the kids as well as all of the staff. They put in a lot of time and effort. Those kids specifically learned their lessons over Zoom. Excuse me, learned their instruments over Zoom last year. It was incredible to see what they were able to accomplish over the last two years. On December 10th, the Mawa High School Sports Buoyers will be opening a pop-up shop selling Mawa swag. It's going to be at the concession stand by the football field from 2:15 to 4:15. This one is for Linda. Today is National Brownie Day. The first, this is a fact I found. The first brownies ever made were created for ladies' fair luncheon in the late 1800s, including an apricot, fillets, and walnuts. How they know that, I have no idea, but I'm going to go with it. Last but not least, yesterday was the 80th anniversary of the attack on Pearl Harbor. Every year on December 7th, the nation pauses to remember the 2,403 service members and civilians who were killed during the Japanese attacks in 1941. It wasn't until 1994 that Congress officially designated December 7th as National Pearl Harbor Remembrance Day. It's important that we take the opportunity to discuss Remembrance Day, like this one, with our kids so that they have a better understanding of the sacrifices that our service members made for our nation on a daily basis. Thank you all to our active, thanks, thank you to all of our active service members, our veterans, and may God bless the memories of all those that we lost in December 7th, 1941. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. But I also want to thank you in the Community Relations Committee for the email with regards to the upcoming events. For those who either have kids in different schools or know kids in district, it's great to have the running calendars, so we can pop in from time to time to all different places. Thank you. Les, Mr. Gallo.
I just have a brief report. We have a board goal this year to share information amongst ourselves. And in response to an inquiry from a fellow board member regarding the district's practices about cost sharing between parents in the district and sports involvement, we looked at the practice. Kyle and Roger Pelletier prepared a lot of information about our practices. Essentially, what we found was that our practices are consistent across the district for various sports. The exception for sharing really is solely focused on sports where we don't own the facility. Swimming, hockey, those sports are, the costs for those facilities are essentially borne by the participants or their fundraising activities. So, but we were consistent in that practice. We also just looked a little bit around the area. The practice is the same in Ramsey, except they pay for swim. And in Midland Park, they have virtually, everything is fundraised. So our practices are consistent with the area.
Thank you very much. Ms. Denise.
Policy has seven policies on tonight's agenda for a first meeting. And this is just a continuation of our review of the 9,000 COVs. There aren't any substantial changes, mainly just minor language changes and grammar corrections.
Thank you very much. Any other committee reports? Board member remarks, additional comments? Seeing none. All right, moving on to whole business. Can I please get a motion to approve the minutes of November 17th, 2021, on the board's session on the action meeting? Ms. Conica seconded by Mr. Copeland. Mr. Copeland.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes.
Ms. Conica.
Yes.
Ms. Sagon.
Yes.
And Mr. Kizmarski, Cairo State. 17 new business, going to include the motion to move resolutions A through AA. Mr. Denise, seconded by Ms. Sagon. Mr. Copeland.
Yes, on everything, but on 17B, I'm abstaining on check number 105017.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes, I don't have a check number to abstain from, but I'm sure, oh.
Not on the skills list.
Oh, miracle. Thank you.
Ms. Conica.
Yes.
Ms. Sagon.
Yes.
And Mr. Kizmarski. Just to confirm, you did pull the bid for the computers. Yes, it was. Yes. New business personnel, can I please get a motion to pass resolutions A through HH? Mr. Copeland, seconded by Mr. Gallo. Mr. Copeland.
Yes, and thank you to all the volunteers.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Denise.
Yes.
Mr. Gallo.
Yes, and thank you to the personnel office for balancing and filling every one of those little spots that are, it seemed like a very busy period of hiring there.
Ms. Conica.
Yes.
Ms. Sagon.
Yes, and I'd just like to say that I think the three new clubs at the high school sound wonderful.
And Mr. Kizmarski.
Yes.
19 public questions are common. Public participation in board meetings is in accordance with law 0167. At this time, members of the public may ask questions or make comment on educational issues or school matters of community interest. As a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one. Your remarks still no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. Can I please get a motion to open the meeting to the public? Mr. De Silva, seconded by Ms. Conica. Okay, Mr. Feasen.
Good evening. Good to see everybody. John Feasen, 20 Falcon Court, Mawa, New Jersey. Land of the free, home of the brave. John Fezen, 20, Falcon Court, Mawa, New Jersey, land of the free, home of the brave. I just have one question, but before I ask the question, I just want to congratulate the idea of the partnership. That's a very impressive program that I find fascinating. We have so many people in town that can volunteer to work with the schools and to add the real-life element to the classroom. So I think that's wonderful, and I'm glad you discussed it as the seed that will hopefully grow to a big trait. So thumbs up. Now to a question. As you all are aware, tomorrow night, there will be a special town meeting to solicit input, positions, and opinions from Mawa residents regarding a new ordinance that will permit the establishment of a retail cannibalist store on the northbound side of Route 17 in Mawa. Will the Mawa Board of Education present its position on this ordinance at the meeting tomorrow night?
Well, that's a question. I wasn't preparing, I don't believe the Board was prepared to take any position at this time. There has been no discussion among the board members.
Do you think it's important that the BLE presents their position to the town residents?
I don't know that the, that we're, that's outside of our wheelhouse, that's not part of, that's not within our purview. I mean, at this point, it's, it's been declared legal by the governor. What they're talking about tomorrow is where to put a new business in town. So there's not really, I mean, there's, the Board really doesn't have, the Board as a body doesn't have, really doesn't have a position in that.
But the Board, part of its charter would be for the welfare of the students, and by introducing this product into town, that would impact the students.
I mean, I guess, I know argument has been made in that direction, arguments are in the opposite direction. I mean, it's, you know, so it's not, it's kind of like masking or not masking.
Well, I'm not here to ask your opinion, yes or no, pro or con, for or against.
Right.
But just to make a statement at tomorrow night's meeting so that the township residents can understand the position of the Board of Ed because you're elected representatives, so I would think that you would have a position one way or the other. What that position is does not affect me at all, I just want to raise awareness.
Yeah, I understand, again, it's kind of like masking versus not masking. There are some for, there are some against, you know, having this establishment, there are a lot of people for, there are a lot of people against. It's not really for the Board of Education to pick a side and advocate for a side, it's, this is outside of our purview.
And I would, you know, I'm, I'll obviously tread very lightly and carefully through my position in town, which, you know, from any board vote here, I would have to recuse myself. But I would simply say, as a matter of law, it is for those 21 and over, much like liquor. So yes, we can have a philosophical discussion on cannabis, marijuana, and its use, but from a legal standpoint, it is legally no different than a liquor store, with the exception of you can't actually walk into an establishment unless you're 21, as opposed to a liquor store, which you can. So again, it's, you know, it's kind of my two cents on it. You know, the Board as a whole has not discussed it privately or otherwise, but that's, I don't necessarily disagree with Rick that we're talking about a, well, one ordinance that's conscious, but also a business that is now considered legal, not only in, you know, Mawa, the state of New Jersey.
And I think all of us individually, as private citizens, have pretty strong opinions on it.
Oh, yeah, this is a very, you know, there are groups who are really for it and really against it.
Yep, but as the Board of Education, it's outside of our purview.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dennis.
Anything else from the public, would you like to make any comments, please? Okay, seeing none, would you like a motion to close? Motion to close, Mr. Gallin, seconded by Ms. Conico. At this time, we will motion to, can I make a motion to recess to executive session for matters of personnel matters, confidential student matters, and legal update? Can I please get a motion? Mr. Copland, seconded by Ms. De Silva. For members of the public, I, we're not taking any, there will be no action taken when we come out of close, so thank you very much for your attendance.